...of the year. Hope everybody's recovered from the Fourth of July weekend. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Kathy. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Moves us on to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody wishing to address the council on anything not on the agenda? Please come on up, sir.
My name is Jeff Kelchek. I live over here at 307 Ridgecrest, and this is probably actually better served by talking to the Cable Committee first. We've been experiencing some significant cable TV issues for well over a month. They appear to be finally solved, but MediaCom has told me on a number of occasions that nobody else has reported problems in the area, and I can go up and down the street and collect a sheet full of names.
Yep.
So, this is probably better served at the Cable Committee first, so I'd like to inquire when the next meeting is going to be.
That one will be as needed, and right now with them working on trying to get the contract done, I don't know when that was going to be. Ron may know.
If you can give me your name and address, I'll send an email to the general manager of MediaCom.
I will send you the email that I sent to Mr. Holtz and Mr. Mattson a couple of weeks, actually better than a month ago now.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. It's on my phone, I'll bet.
Okay, in which case, I will send it again, and I will copy you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Did you sign in, sir? I'm sorry.
I have not.
You would, that would be great.
That'd be great.
And then it really won't hurt if he's got other people, too.
I will go back and collect names, but there are a number of people who are actually ready to drop MediaCom completely and go completely satellite.
Right. I mean, and that's the kind of things we need to know, because if we don't know about them...
This is why I'm here.
That's...we appreciate it.
And tonight on there, because of the weather, it's pictures all over the place and all that.
MediaCom...
Well, I think it's that one there.
I really haven't had any complaints significantly about MediaCom's community service, but the end of May, it went downhill to the point of almost being unusable.
Okay. We appreciate that, because that's the kind of stuff we need to know, so we can get a handle on that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And MediaCom does know about the complaints in town, because I have called them several times.
Yeah, they have not gotten any other calls, does not sit well with me.
That's their standard statement.
Yep, so we'll just check into that and make sure the Cable Commission knows and Ron knows, so we can get ahold of the right folks, and we can take care of that.
Yep.
Anybody else wishing to address us on the public input? Seeing as there is no one, Senator Schmidt is probably running late again, so we'll try to slow down. We're going to skip him for now and move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is the Just and Correct Claims for the Accounting Period Ending June 30th, 2016. Item B are the Meeting Minutes for the June 21st, 2016 City Council Meeting. Item C is Application for Payment Number Two for the 2016 Street Improvements. Item D is Approve a 3.2 Malt Liquor License for the Fire Relief Association. Item E is Resolution 2207 Adopting Primary and General Electing Judges for 2016. Item F is Approve the John Birch Park Agreement. Item G is Hiring a Full-Time Paramedic. And Item H is Approve a Craft and Vendor Show for Eastside Park. Are there any items anybody wishes to pull down? Seeing as there are none, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Kathy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moves us on to item eight this evening, council business. And this will be...the subject tonight is the River Road Water/Sanitary Sewer, which was the alternate one to Westside Two project, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
As you're aware, we've been kind of working on this project for quite some time now, and the project has kind of taken several different spins, and for quite some time we were looking at potentially the option of installing just city water with the idea that maybe they would be able to improve their septic systems if need be. But it goes back even further than that, but anyway, at one point of time or another, council added the water and sewer into the 2015 Westside, or 2016 Westside Two project, as you're well aware. We did do the alternate one. It came in at about a little over $122,000 with hanches, and that was through formal bid. And so, we had this Public Works Discussion, or Public Works Committee Meeting Discussion last week. Property owners were there. Greg was there, and the Goodhue County, Lisa Hanny and Pam Holtz were there representing Goodhue County and the public health, related to the water and wastewater, or the sewer septic system. Anyway, it kind of comes down to options for you. What you see in your packet is, and what was sent out today was the resolution that because we did, or you did not order the alternate one at the time you opened the public hearing, closed the public hearing, ordered the Westside Two project, but did not order alternate one or alternate two, in order to consider either of those two options again, we have to set another improvement hearing, if you want to proceed with the project and with the special assessment process. So, that resolution's in your packet for consideration. That meeting, if you...that hearing, excuse me, if you wanted to hold it, would have to be held on August 3rd, because that is the drop dead date, as far as the existing prices for the River Road alternate project that hanches has given us, and they've been pretty generous for their timeframe, up to that point even. Other options, of course, would be to install the water and sewer totally at city cost, not recommended, as I said in there, by staff. The other option would be to, since the plans and specs are already drawn, they could be put temporarily on the shelf and included in a future project, or if there's an emergency situation with one of the septic systems, it could be brought up back for a project on its own, too. And with that possibility in mind, I did, I was having a conversation, I called PCA rep that handles municipal wastewater, and asked about potential options for the homeowners and/or us, as far as funding for that fairly expensive three parcel piece for water and sewer, and from his perspective from sewer. And he said that project on its own really was too small to consider any of their projects for. And then before I hung up, I said, you know, I want to ask you about another potential project for the PCA, and that's our sanitary sewer bridge project. And I explained the background on that, told him the approximate $800,000 estimate we had from SEH, and he said, well, now we have a project. He said, you could include that earlier project, we talked about the River Road project, in with this, submit an application. Now, that isn't until March of next year, so it's going to take some time, but in summation, there's, could be potential funding sources for us, or for them, or both. And as long as they're not in a rush, which I talked to one party today, I talked to Katie, Carol Lee Stock's daughter, and she said they're not in a rush, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, so...and we heard from the other property, one of the other two property owners the other night, that they weren't necessarily in a rush, and so that's kind of where we're at.
I think there was some mention in the meeting the other day about some other grants possibly out there, but it would be next year before anybody could put in for those also?
They were going to look into Cannon River Watershed, some grants through that, and you know, Greg, I don't know, you and I talked briefly this afternoon, but the PPL...
Yeah, what Ron's talking about with the sewer bridge project is the PCA has a, or in conjunction with the PCA, the Public Finance Authority, or the PFA, has a revolving loan fund that's usually a low-interest loan, you know, granted, the interest rates are pretty low right now for the city, but it's a low-interest loan revolving fund, and what cities can do, and it's really geared to wastewater treatment projects, but any wastewater project would qualify. And every March, they have what they call the PPL list, or Project Priority List, and you submit a project, it's a couple-page questionnaire, and it's ranked, and then you get on the list, and then, and that's in March, and then in closer to summer, they have another list called the Intended Use Plan. If you intend to move forward, and if you're in the fundable range, now this PPL list, you end up, you get a score, and they have money to fund down to a certain score. And usually, it's, let's say, 45 is the range, and anyone below that, you typically aren't funded, and you don't move ahead, but if you're in the fundable range, then you would move ahead in summer, getting closer to design, and then you'd get that money the following year. You'd have two years to spend it, but it'd be available the following year, at the soonest from when you got on the PPL list. There would be, maybe through Cannon River Partnership or Soiled Waters, some funding available to the private citizens for those, for that work, but this, the PFA stuff that Ron was talking about through the PCA, it would be directed towards the city share, and coupling it with the sewer bridge makes some sense, and is something to think about. It's not going to be, it's not going to be tomorrow, it wouldn't even be for next year, but we would get on the list, and if something happens in St. Paul, as far as funding for clean water, that might help us get up the list, or get some of the projects on the list funded, so we would jump up. Part of the need, it's based on need, based on age of the infrastructure, based on issues with the infrastructure, that's how these projects are scored.
I was just wondering about the cost, if we wait, and what would the cost be, and what's the percentage?
Well, it's more than likely the costs will go up. How much they go up, it's hard to say.
No, I mean, there's going to be a big project, probably in two years?
Yeah, right now, I mean, we've discussed doing a project every other year, as far as a major street and water sewer project.
So, I mean...
It depends on the bid climate at the time, and prices, of course.
So, would the cost be less for the homeowners?
Well, that would be determined completely by council.
Yep. I mean, it's just like right now, I mean, if you were to charge homeowners right now, I mean, the assessment would be outrageous.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I mean, it would have to go, we'd have to find a way to make it, you know, possible for them to be able to pay it without having to, you know, pay an outrageous amount. I mean, it's, I mean, even if the city had to eat more, I mean, we can't help where these three parcels are and stuff, so, I mean, I think that we need to...if it was up to me, I mean, you guys get to vote, but if it's up to me, I think that we should probably push it down the road at this time, and wait and see what we can maybe get for grants, things that can help them and can help us to fund it.
In my conversation with the individual from the MPCA, he did, I asked him about, because he mentioned the loan, and I said, well, we can borrow it, but interest rates right now. But he said they're, with the application process, he said he looks at, or they look at affordability and the pollutant base, and I wasn't going to go into definitions of what that means, but he said as far as grant versus low interest loan, and then they knock like 15% off the top of the total project price, right off the bat, and I don't know what that really meant either, and he was a little bit, he said, I'll just send you the information, you can look at it for next year. He said, because things could change, too, but, no, he said that would be what he would recommend. He didn't know of any other programs right off the top of his head, but that was the PCA, and I haven't talked to anybody from Department of Health at all, as far as from the water perspective, but it's really the sanitary sewer or the septic systems that are the driving force.
Yeah, I remember, two months ago, we went to a meeting, too, and they said a septic tank would be fine, they had a place for that. Did that get all ruled out? What happened there? Because that was all discussed and said, yeah, let's go with that.
Well, that's taken so many turns, I can't even begin to describe.
That's what I'm wondering, what's going on?
But, no, not...
I don't think anybody came forward with a plan, with an actual concrete plan that said, this is what we propose.
It was a catch-22.
Yeah, the county said they wouldn't give approval until they saw a plan, and nobody wanted to give a plan until they could get approval for it.
All right, I think, Mike, didn't you go forward and give them a plan?
The stocks stopped the plan in the process. There wasn't...
Mike, come on up, please.
Yeah.
I'm Mike Sebenhaller at 1010 River Road. I was in a meeting with a septic designer, Katie Windmeyer, that's Carol Lee Stock's daughter, Tom from Advanced Septic Design out of New Prague, three people from the Goodhue County office. We dug some holes on site, measured from wells and all the setbacks from the existing system and everything. They need a 15-foot variance in order to set the new system on the property line, or near the property line. It got stopped at that point. I think the stocks didn't want to go ahead with hiring the designer at like 800 and some dollars to get that design forward until some sort of, something was figured out, I don't know, whatever route, whatever path they wanted to take. But it was all set up for that path to be done, as long as the designer was paid, and the variance was allowed by the city to get within 15 feet of the line.
Well, the other part is the county's portion of it, too, because the county has to approve the septic, and so, I mean, that's, we've got to watch that, because of where the river runs through there, too.
Yep, the county was on site and dug boring holes on site, and they verified their end of the deal, that it would be allowed, as long as there was a 15-foot variance for the property line. It was within the setback from the water line, that's on the, be the northeast side of the road, existing road. Because there's other property lines and stuff down in there, there's roads that aren't there, and you know, it's, the property lines aren't where they are, you know, who knows in Cannon Falls, so, they're all over the place. When I was just at the last meeting, Babel Gorman stopped in and said, there's a water line on my property, and that was the one sentence that I heard him say, so, he just said there was a water line on his property, so, I don't know. We should probably get something figured out with the property lines everywhere, before we do any, any sort of anything with anything, but the stocks had their property lines all adjusted and everything, when they were going to sell the property a couple of years ago, and the design that Tom was going to design for that septic was going to be on their property. Just needed a variance from the city, and it, the county people were there to verify all the setbacks, and the only thing was that water line that was on a map, that wasn't there, because I think, Tom, you verified that it wasn't there, right?
I've never been able to find it.
Yeah, so, it's not there, but it was on an old map, and that's the same map that says the streets are in different places and stuff, so, I don't think that water line ever got put in. So, the septic system is a viable option, it just needs a variance from the city, and then the county needs that plan, that special design of a plan, so they can approve it. But there was, there was three people from the county on site, and it sounds like it will be a go, as long as they get that design in their hand.
Ron, you want to check with Lisa Hanny on that portion of it, so that we can verify that?
Well, the statement that was made the other night by Lisa was that they need a plan to look at, in order to determine acceptability, and they don't have a plan to look at.
Katie Widener, Carol Lee Stock's daughter, 1014 River Road. The situation with the plan was that he would not design a plan until we had all of the variances, things from the county and the city in line. So, because we didn't have approval from the county, I mean, it was, we were in a catch-22, because we, you know, nobody would do their job without the other, so that's where, that's where this ended, and that's why it stopped, because the county wouldn't, wouldn't allow variances, or the city wouldn't allow variances without a plan, the plan designer wouldn't design a plan unless he knew that the variances were in place. So, that's where we kind of fell through. And in talking with Lisa and Pam a couple of other times, you know, they're looking at the bigger picture, they're not just looking at that we've got an issue right now, they're looking, from the county standpoint, at the bigger picture of these three properties that are all going to, at some point, have this issue. And our concern with ours is that if, if you allow us to put a septic system in, which is wonderful, and would be fine, if we could get all these things arranged, in two years, if something comes up and you've got to bring city sewer and water down, then we've just spent 15,000 to 20,000 on a brand-new septic system, and now you're going to assess us for city sewer and water. So, you know, we're just wondering, our concern is that, where we're going to go from here. You know, if we put a septic system in, then I want to be guaranteed for the next 20 years, or however long that septic system lasts, that I'm not assessed.
Right. I heard that you wouldn't be, but I don't know for sure. We'd have to check that out.
I mean, you're not going to assess them unless there's actually a project. I mean, that would be the only way you'd be assessed, unless we had to bring city sewer and water there.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If two years, if I put a septic system in today, or next week, or next month, and two years from now, Mike's system fails, and you have to bring city sewer and water down, where am I? You know, then do, then do we have to hook up? Are we required, because it's there? You know, all these other questions come up, and that's, I guess, where we're trying to, trying to just make sure that all of our questions are answered, before we just say, we're going to throw a septic system in, or you're going to assess us for city sewer and water.
And that's after seeing all the stuff that I was hearing, I thought, well, I can't make a quick decision on this.
I think at this point, we're to the point of pushing it down the road until the next project comes along, because to try to get all this stuff together and be able to do that hearing by the 3rd of August, I don't see it happening.
Me either.
Between now and then. Carol Lee, would you like to say something?
I can't sign in, I'm sorry.
You've got my name.
I put an X here. Carol Lee Stock, 104 Northwest Court, and I own the property at 1014. The question I have about the grant application, if we were to put this off until the 2018 project, by the way, Senator, was the sewer bridge project in the bonding bill?
It was not.
Oh, okay, all right. So, if we were to put that off until that 2018 project, would the grant be specific to this project, and not, you know, decided to go someplace else in the city?
We would, we would put it in for the sewer bridge and for this project.
Yes.
Because that's the only way that they would even consider the grant.
Okay.
For that one.
That was my question. Thank you.
What's the other guy look like?
This is called a boxer's fridge, but I did not swab it. I keep telling the same story all the time, anyway.
Yeah, just to clarify, too, for Carol Lee, the River Road project on its own, from the discussion I had with the MPCA guy, would not qualify for any of the programs, but if we put that project in with the sanitary sewer bridge project, then there'd be some potential.
Okay.
And we wouldn't leave it out.
Thank you.
And there is a magic wand in the back row, you are right. We just have to, he has to find the on and off switch, turn it on.
All right. Well, this time, we have to make a decision, folks, if we're going to move forward with the planning, to have the, go ahead and, we have to determine, not right now, if we're going to move ahead with the River Road project, or we're going to move it...
Make a motion that we shelve it, but try to find, or what kind of grants that we can get, so that by the time it's there, we can, we know what's going on.
One second.
I have a motion by Morrison, a second by Merle, to put the plan on the shelf for now, and try to find means of funding the project that'll be both viable for the city and for the citizens, as we move forward, before we move forward with this project. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
And we will keep looking, I will talk to Lisa Hanny at the county also, and those folks are supposed to have some information on some other grants, so we'll find out what we got to do and let you know on those, because assessing the kind of money we'd have to assess isn't good for anybody. All right. Now, we're going to have the magic, I mean, Senator Schmidt, not the magic wand, Senator Schmidt, come up and give us the legislative update.
Council, pleasure to join you tonight, and I'm sorry, this is the second attempt at getting together. I've learned from City of Cannon Falls, I have to be on time here, maybe 10 minutes. In any event, I appreciate the chance to come and visit you, and give you an update on the 2016 legislative session. I have a little overview of what we were up to here in the last year, if I could pass it around. So, I guess, I'm not going to sugarcoat things, and Mayor, you've heard this already, the way I characterize the 2016 session is the good, the bad, and the ugly. I just think there's no better way of putting it. In terms of the good things that we were able to accomplish, continuing our string of fiscal responsibility, the most important thing the legislature does is put forward a budget and balance it. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. And I think that's the most important thing that we were able to do this year. We resisted the temptation to turn a surplus into a deficit with unsustainable tax cuts or new spending, and so, I think maintaining that fiscal responsibility, a primary accomplishment in this legislature. Three and a half years ago, the Senate took office, three and a half, I'm sorry, $3 billion budget problem, $1 billion of immediate deficit, school funding shift of $1 billion, another $1 billion unaccounted for inflation. And what we've been able to do in Minnesota is turn the corner and put behind us those years of budget deficit after budget deficit, and so now, we're running surpluses. And I think the challenge for us is to manage that budget responsibly going forward, I think to build strong partnerships between state and local government, and make sure that any decision we make does not put future legislatures in a position of having significant deficits to deal with. So, that's a bit, I got to tell you, folks, it's a big accomplishment here, continuing that fiscal stewardship. Another thing, we were able to invest in a supplemental budget bill this year, another $35 million is going to our really successful border-to-border broadband fund. So far, we've had about 10,000 homes and businesses, another 100 or so, community anchor institutions like schools and libraries and hospitals, connected with high-speed internet, due to our border-to-border broadband fund. We doubled down on that effort this year, $35 million more, and we're expecting, all said and done, 20,000 additional homes and businesses connected with high-speed internet. So, if you have any folks in your area here, or outside of town, who would be interested in better internet service, I'd be happy to talk with you, and put you in touch with our Office of Broadband Development, they would be happy to come on down. We have applications for the next two months that Office at DEED is taking, and it can make a huge difference in rural competitiveness and quality of life. And so, those are some of the good things, frustrating things, the bad, if you will. We got so close on a transportation funding package this year. Representative Kelly from Red Wing and I sat on a 10-member Transportation Conference Committee for the last couple of years. In that conference committee, Democrats and Republicans pretty much came together with a conceptual agreement on raising additional revenue, rededicating some... a conceptual agreement on, on raising additional revenue, rededicating some of our general fund or surplus dollars, and also looking for bonding to, to, to approach a significant annual transportation funding gap in Minnesota. Experts tell us that gap is about eight hundred million dollars. We've got to take a big step if we're going to come up with those dollars on a year-to-year basis and fund transportation. I think I've told you this in the past, what the Senate has been advocating for would devote forty percent of all new revenue straight to rural roads, I'm sorry, to, to local governments for roads and bridges. And so, whatever the deal is, whether it's this session, or I'm sorry, this summer in a special session, or next year, I think making sure that the state is able to cobble together enough dollars to, to fund its share of transportation expenses, and also make sure our local govern, uh, local governments have the resources they need to invest in roads and bridges. And so, that's, it was frustrating that we weren't, weren't able to get that ball past the goal line this year, but we did make some significant progress in trying to chart a course forward. And I should just remind folks, we've had two comprehensive transportation funding packages in the last thirty years, nineteen eighty-seven, and then it took that bridge collapsing in two thousand eight for us to have another comprehensive transportation funding bill. And so, it, it's very difficult to do. There's a lot of tensions between rural and metro, actually more so than Democrat and Republican. But nonetheless, we've got to find a way forward to fund roads and bridges in Minnesota. And I can't think of a better time to do that when the times are good, when we're running a surplus. And so, hopefully, while, while this economic surge continues around the state, we're able to, to find a way to broker an agreement on transportation funding. Likewise, with our bonding bill this year, we had, we had an agreement, ninety-five percent of the bonding bill, and I thought, the last day of session, we actually had an agreement. The bill that came over from the House was not what we expected, and, and it didn't pass. But I think there's a real opportunity here later this summer for a, a one-day special session, for us to go in and pass that bonding bill, and also a tax bill that had a hundred and seventy-eight votes out of two hundred and one at the legislature. A lot of folks liked that tax bill, two hundred and fifty million dollars of tax relief, property tax relief, local government aid, township aid, county program aid, lots of good stuff in there. And so, hopefully, we're able to, to, I think, get through the, the primary season here and, and, and come back in St. Paul for a one-day special session in August, and, and cap off what I think has been a tremendously productive four-year run. Again, balancing our budget, managing it with fiscal responsibility, investing in, in some targeted areas like broadband internet access or education. That handout I gave you shows what we've done for rural education in, in Minnesota. A billion dollars of additional funding for our schools in the last few years. And we just want to make sure the state is living up to its end of the bargain. Another challenge for us in rural Minnesota is teacher retention and recruitment. A lot of our districts are having trouble filling open positions. And so, I could go on and on here, but I don't want to filibuster your meeting. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to stand for them. I know a couple of issues that we've discussed in the past, healthcare. Spent a lot of time this session, Mayor, thank you for, for coming up to St. Paul. I think what you and some of our Cannon Falls residents were able to do to bring life to this issue is really valuable for our healthcare discussions. And then that bonding bill, we can talk a little bit more about projects that we're in or we're not, and if you'd like. Otherwise, I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have, and just really appreciate of, of your time here tonight. So, thank you.
Thanks, Senator. Anybody got any questions? Of Senator Schmidt on anything? I know we're, we're still hoping to get the overpass funded, if we have a bonding bill or the transportation bill, and have it in one of those, because, so we can get the other side connected like it should be. I mean, we all saw what happened a few weeks ago. I think you were here for that meeting when they were going to close down the, the roundabouts, and it would have put a big hurt on a lot of businesses and a lot of people. And that's another reason that we're pushing to, to get that done. So, we appreciate all your, all you do to help with that. I did bring up the other thing with you the other day on, on the healthcare with Blue Cross not moving forward next year with individual plans for individual business owners. So, you know, it's, it's a shame that our healthcare system has gotten to this point. But we appreciate all you do, and we'll keep working with you to try to help get that fixed here in Minnesota. I know I, I did bring it up to Senator Franken's office and all when I was up in DC and waiting to have the discussion with them on that. So, appreciate all that. I know what it's like up there. It's, 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 you know, if we could just get everybody together on the same page, you know, pretty close, I mean, you, we could, we could get a lot more done. I mean, because I just traveled out of state this week, and the roads sure are nice when you get in Iowa and all those places down there.
And, and you know, I hear some people say Minnesota's roads are nice, but the bottom line is, we've got to continue to, to keep up and, and, and make up for, I think, some lost time in Minnesota when it comes to infrastructure investments. So, that's a huge priority going into two thousand sixteen. And another one is that healthcare issue. And I don't want to gloss over it here. I think last summer, when we got together, we inspired a really good, I think, discussion that, that mirrored what was going on statewide with a health finance task force that had met throughout the year, put together some recommendations. This last session, we, we acted on a few of those recommendations at the legislature. We're also able to take some steps in highlighting, I think, some of the real cost challenges we have in southeastern Minnesota. Last fall, we had a pair of roundtable or, or summits, if you will, with, with folks from St. Paul. We had the commissioners down here, folks from Mayo Clinic and others, just highlighting the challenge that southeastern Minnesota faces. And just real quick, a couple of the bills that we put forward this year. One was seeking a federal waiver to redraw those geographic rating area lines. And just so we're clear, the Affordable Care Act requires every state to have a set number of geographic rating areas, one for every metropolitan statistical area in your state, plus one. In Minnesota, we have eight MSAs, if you will, metropolitan statistical areas, plus one, so that's nine geographic rating areas. And when Department of Commerce went to draw the lines, if you're going to make nine regions in this state, the lines they drew made sense. My question is, why nine? What makes sense about nine? The more you can peel the onion on this issue, you realize that a lot of folks in the Twin Cities come down to Rochester to see care for healthcare. A lot of folks in southeastern Minnesota get their care up in the Twin Cities. That arbitrary line separating Good Hugh and Dakota County, I think, really needs to be examined. Minnesota would be the first state in the country to get a waiver to redraw those geographic rating area lines. And the, the odds may be long, but darn it, folks, this is the right thing to do. And so, we're taking steps to try to do that. We've also instructed Department of Commerce to look at the issue of the, the individual and small group markets in Minnesota. And Mayor, you referenced the Blue Cross Blue Shield pulling out of the individual market. It's not very competitive. We don't have a, a lot of, you know, competition in this part of the state on the provider side, or the, the, you know, the, the health plan side, the insurance side. And that individual market is particularly troublesome. And so, it's a loss leader for a lot of our insurance plans. And so, Blue Cross pulled out altogether. And so, what we have to figure out is, what sorts of options are we able to, to pursue to give individuals or, or, you know, you know, small employers more options in this part of the state? You know, one option might be an expanded Minnesota Care Plan. And that's a, a program that's been in place for twenty years in Minnesota, targeting options to hard-working Minnesotans and, and their families who, who just fall through the cracks. They don't have affordable healthcare plans available to them. That's something that the two thousand seventeen legislature is going to spend some real time looking at, the future of Minnesota Care, not to mention MinSure. But I think it's also important for us to recognize, MinSure is not really the problem here. I mean, the real problem is the underlying cost drivers in healthcare, pharmaceuticals, consumption, high-cost areas in the state where we don't have competition, per se. And so, those are the sorts of things that we really have to get a better understanding of, and we have got to take action to promote competition. And I think where, where it makes sense to, to position Minnesota more competitively under the Affordable Care Act. That's here to stay, but we've got some work to do in terms of making healthcare more affordable for folks. I think that's the biggest challenge for us, right up there with roads and bridges. So, I don't, I don't know what else to say there that, that won't open up a whole discussion. I'm happy to chat at, at length, if anyone would like to, about this issue. And just for, for what it's worth, we have monthly office hours over at High Quality Bakery here in town. So, I think it's not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday, I'll be over there. And if anybody would like to stop by and talk healthcare, I'd probably put it in my, my weekly newsletter just to advertise it as such, because Julie was great coming up and, and talking about the challenges they face as a small business owner in, in Good Hugh County. Last thing I'd just like to say is, on that bonding bill, we did pretty darn well in terms of getting projects from this area in our bonding bill. The challenge was getting that bonding bill agreed to at the House and passed out the door. And so, I would just say, if there are projects, whether it's with the sewer water or the bridge there, be happy to continue to work towards those. The challenge with the bonding bill is this, there are so many requested projects in Minnesota that there's kind of a wait. And we have five point two billion dollars' worth of projects that were requested for this, this bonding period. We had a bonding bill, we were fighting to have a bonding bill of one point five billion on the Senate side. The House bill was six hundred million dollars. So, unless we have a larger bonding bill, that backlog of worthy projects just grows and grows and grows. And so, we've got to get serious about using, you know, Minnesota's, you know, bonding capacity to invest in these projects of regional significance and infrastructure. And so, hopefully, we can have a good bonding bill this year and set ourselves up for another good bonding bill, whether it's next year or the year after. And, and this bill is the vehicle for us to invest in, not only roads and bridges in some part, our, our colleges and university campuses, but also these sorts of projects that we talk about, and overpass, you know, a water project. And so, I think the good news here is, the governor has really put a keen emphasis on, on water quality, water infrastructure. And so, hopefully, in the next two bonding bills, under his administration, we're going to have a, a big carve-out for water projects. And I think I'd really love to work with the city on, on positioning ourselves to be competitive in that effort. The challenge, though, just it comes down to, you know, dollars and cents. If you've got five billion dollars of requests in a billion-dollar bonding bill, you've got to, you know, not everything's going to get funded in year one. So, just a reminder for us all, but I'd be happy to work with the city and others, if, with the Public Facilities Authority or others, on, on positioning Cannon Falls to, to do well in, in this regard. All right, I think I've succeeded in filibustering, so I'm going to quit yapping away. Mr. Mayor, thanks for your time. If anyone has any questions offline, please just let me know.
Thanks, Senator. Unless anybody else has anything else?
There's a big storm coming out there, so get home safely.
Appreciate, appreciate you coming in. It's just a little weather. But, yeah, you drive safely, get back to, to Red Wing, and we, like I said, we appreciate all that, that you've done this session to, to try to help us with the healthcare. Like I said, we'll continue to work with you, and hopefully, we can get some things done. Because like you said, it was the, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and it was more towards the ugly than it was the, the, the good.
We didn't even get into the ugly. I think that's the campaign season that's upon us now, so we'll all endure it, one way or another. But thank you for your time tonight, really appreciate it. All right, take care.
Thanks, Senator. With that, we'll go to reports.
Uh, street projects, moving along well. The, the street crew will be in tomorrow to start putting Hoffman Street back together. We might be starting to see some curb by, by the week of the eighteenth, if not sooner, depending on weather. Temporary water system was moved from Hoffman over to Mill, so the folks on Mill will get to enjoy the temporary water system for a few weeks to a month or so. But they're going to, this week, they'll finish the last two services on Hoffman. And like I said, the street crew will come in and start working their way from Sixth all the way down to Dow, so start putting it back together.
Appreciate it. Tom?
Just want to remind the public that the five exercise units, outdoor exercise units, got installed. I'd like to thank Rosie Schluter for all of her hard work and the five sponsors. If you'd thank them, as you see, the plaques are on all of them now, and hopefully, it'll be a good addition to the trail system.
Chief?
Well, the fair has concluded, so we now turn our sights to our next event, as far as some of the, the street stuff, which will be the Art and Wine Festival, the sixteenth and seventeenth, in Lower Hannah's Bend. For that, we typically don't have to do a lot of street restrictions because they make use of the fairgrounds for parking and then just shuttle people back and forth. So, the only delays you'd probably experience would be temporary because of that shuttling. So, I don't think people would see a significant impact on their, their movement through Ninth Street and, and Stellton, that area.
Merle?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I have, what is this, where they're saying they need liability insurance for the farmer's market? I had numerous people ask me about that.
I'll have to get, probably have to get with Dave and those guys on that. I know, I know they were talking about it because people down there selling their projects on city property. Couldn't put the city at risk, so that's why they're looking at the liability on it, I think.
There's a group right now, or some of them say if they have to have it, they won't come. I mean, it's just, you know, for the, what they're making and that.
These are some of the problems that we're working through.
Okay.
There is an association, and they may be able to get insurance through the association.
Okay.
I told them also to check with their homeowner's insurance. Sometimes the homeowner's insurance can cover what they do.
Then also, they were talking about the, the first Thursday also, that people would have to have the liability. I mean, like, I'm all right because the business, I mean, you know, isn't a problem, but...
Right, see, you're, yeah, if you have a business, your business liability can carry.
Right, right.
You know?
But...
But these, these aren't, they're not a real business.
Right, right, right.
They don't have a business.
Right. So, that'll...
We haven't worked through everything yet.
Okay.
I mean, there's a, there's a lot of questions. We've met with the vendors. These things have been discussed. Some of them we have answers for, some of them we don't. The biggest thing is, if you're doing business on city property and you cause harm to somebody, we want to make sure that you're insured for it.
Right.
Because they will come after the city. And I don't feel that the city should be on the hook for something that an individual does.
Right, right.
You know, these are, these are some of the, if they're on private property, that's a different story. They're going to be using our property.
Right. Okay, that's, that's all I got.
Well, there's some of the things that are being discussed.
And I know the, the committees are, are working on it and trying to work through all those issues, and nothing's been finalized on any of that stuff yet from the reports I've gotten. Just like to say thanks, the Public Works, and to the Police Department, and all involved in putting on the parade and the fair and, and helping to set up the parade route, tear down the parade route, making sure that people got in, in town and out of town safely without too many issues. That's a lot of work, a lot of man-hours going to that, so really appreciate the job that you guys did on that moving forward.